Next item on our agenda is an update on the basis program. Ms. Christensen?
All right, thank you. I think my video is starting. Good evening, Mr. Feinberg, school board members, administrators, and community members. I'm excited to share with you an overview of the basis work the district continues to engage in. First, I would like to take a moment to recognize and to thank the members of the community who have sent letters to us advocating for the continuation of this very important work, including some of our students whom I have been in contact with. I can assure you that the district is committed to this work. This evening, I will go over our approach to creating systematic changes, the trainings and the action steps that we have taken along the way. Also, Mr. Leon Smith and Ms. Beth Mastercola are the co-chairs of our Strategic Action Planning Committee for the Diversity and Inclusion Goal. They're joining us tonight to share the process and provide a scope of their work. And I will end by sharing a proposal to continue our partnership with Sage Wellness for the 2020-2021 school year. Three years ago, the district basis team assisted in the development of a multi-year plan that outlined necessary training, action steps, and advocated for the flexibility within the plan. We wanted to ensure that all stakeholders in our community understood the commitment to this work. We were part of the process and were provided the learning opportunities they needed to support all members of the School District of Haverford Township Community. This meant we needed to be flexible in our plan, willing to hear honest feedback, and to be responsive to the needs that we heard. From the very beginning, the district took a systems approach. This was intentional. This work does not fall on the lap of one person, but instead, an intentional decision was made to include everyone in this role. I do, however, bring leadership to the organization and structures that we are incorporating throughout all the areas of the school district. We are creating systems and building capacity for all of our stakeholders to become culturally proficient and have an integral role in developing a sense of belonging for all of our students. So what is cultural proficiency? It is the policies and the practices in an organization or the values and behavior of an individual that enable the person or institution to engage effectively with people and groups who are different from them. Cultural proficiency is an inside-out approach that influences how people relate to their colleagues, to students, and to the larger community. Cultural proficiency is a lens for examining one's work and one's relationships. Again, the district's goal is to build a lens of cultural proficiency into all of our district's discussions and, more importantly, our decisions. Our goal is that there will no longer be a need for a separate basis presentation, but instead that you will see equity considerations throughout presentations and actions over the course of the entire school year. To that end, some of the information that you will hear tonight might seem very familiar, and that is evidence of our progress towards that goal. This slide shows the multiple-year approach, multiple-layered, excuse me, the multiple-layered approach that our planning process took and the training and/or action steps that were developed for each stakeholder group. I will go through each layer and describe a few of the action steps that we engaged in over the past year, but this is also a very purposeful visual reminder that all of our efforts are to benefit the sense of belonging that all of our students feel while at Haverford with all of the other layers encircling our students. So let's start with the student experience. Rob, we can move on. We can move on to... Let's start with the student experience. How does our basis work directly impact students? One of the fundamental components of developing a sense of belonging in schools is relationships, relationships with peers and relationships with teachers. So at the elementary level, responsive classroom is our main focus for both last year and for this past year. Last year, we integrated the responsive classroom component of morning meeting. As you already know, our master schedule includes 20 minutes of morning meeting for all of our K-5 students. This past year, we added the positive adult language component of responsive classroom to all of our K-5 classrooms. At the middle school, the staff have turned every early dismissal professional development day into a wellness day program. The day has a theme, and past themes have ranged from mental health, internet safety, and school safety. Students are broken down into groups and rotate around stations with activities and learning around the theme. A guest speaker is always part of the learning, and the principal holds a family preview night about a week before the wellness day, where families can come in and hear that presentation. This mode has been a huge... This model has been a huge success. Not only does it provide information to our parents, but it also opens the communication between home and school. Parents of children who may have experienced trauma or have a history of a topic are more likely to attend that parent evening and share concerns with the middle school teams. This has allowed the staff to support students and obtain additional information that might be impacting their learning experience. This also ties in with the middle school's explicit focus on building relationships, relationships with the students, but also the families that we serve. The high school spent its efforts on student voice. Later in the presentation, I'll be sharing a video that illustrates the work on authentic student voice occurring at the high school, resulting in a pretty big change. The efforts to connect students with clubs, sports, or work continues to be a priority, again, nurturing the idea of the importance of relationships between peers and with staff. Also, administration has begun to dive deeper into the data on enrollment of classes. What is the makeup of our STEM classes, our AP and our honors classes, our special education classes? These questions and breakdowns are incorporated into administrative meetings and teacher discussions. There are also K-12 initiatives occurring for the continued improvement of our district as a system. We engaged in the Catalyst Inquiry again this year using the PSSM, which is the Psychological Scale of School Membership. It's a survey that asked our student body how they experience a sense of belonging in our schools. Again, with systems thinking in place, principals were asked to use their PSSM data to generate a specific building goal based upon their results from their student survey information. Each month, we met with the building principal to review the progress on their goals, including the PSSM basis goal. We will go over a few of the activities that resulted in that work in a bit when we take a glimpse into what's happening around Haverford. We continue to utilize the Delaware Valley Consortium for Equity and Excellence, affectionately known as the DVCEE, and send a team to every opportunity that it provides. I attend every session with the teams. Together, we populate a shared resource document outlining learning outcomes, resources, and specific connections to our district. I present this information to all of the principals at a monthly meeting. I wanted a way to have input and authentic connections to our buildings, but not add an additional stress in the workload of the specific teachers that attend these workshops. This model has been an extremely beneficial one for us. We continue to build capacity across our system along with building a library of resources and tools for all of our administrators to use if and when it's needed. And the curriculum department has done an incredible amount of work, reviewing and providing resources for all of our staff. The awareness of representation, culturally responsive instructional strategies, and support for our staff to teach difficult topics and identify resources that provide a variety of perspectives have all been included in the work already being done in the department. So let's move on and talk about our student experience. How does our... I'm sorry about that. Our leaders. Let's move on and talk about our leaders. What do our leaders need to have in order to successfully navigate these difficult conversations? They need information. They need to be ahead of the curve. They need to understand and be able to explain why and what's happening. They need to be a part of the decision-making process. Our goal was to equip district leaders to have these conversations, to feel confident and brave, knowing it's not going to be perfect, and encouraging a serious look at our practices. So let's look at how we did this. How do we get them out ahead of the curve? We did that with some explicit understandings, like, not everyone is where we might expect them to be, and that has to be okay. We have provided space to talk, to learn, and to reflect by incorporating an equity topic into each of our administrative team meetings, time for readings and reflections, as well as providing a wide variety of resources with various perspectives to provide that cognitive dissonance, which is what we know is the best for adult learning to happen. On this slide, you will see a lot of all of the action steps that have occurred with our administrative team this year, and I will touch on two specifically. First, we focused on learning and activities that principals could reproduce for their buildings. Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain by Zaretta Hammond has been a driving resource, and we conducted an intensive book study around this literature. All educational administrators read this book. We facilitated learning activities and connections during both the summer retreat and the winter administrative summit. We provided concrete ways for all of us to reflect on our own biases, learn about the brain's role, and employ instructional moves that leverage those relationships to really build independent learning, which independent learners, which Hammond notes is a driving influencer to the achievement gap. Ideas that can be used with... These ideas and activities that the principals could use with teachers right away, including a new study guide that leaders could use with their building to extend and expand on these discussions. Second, as I've already talked about, the development of a district as well as a building principal goal that surrounds the basis work. Again, every principal is required to have a basis goal that is reviewed on a regular basis. Systematically, again, systematically, we hold monthly meetings that Dr. Ruchi, Ms. Saxa, and I attend with each principal to not only ensure the level of accountability is happening, but also to offer supports and suggestions on the successful implementation of each building goal. All of that leading is great, but what if there's no one following? So let's move on. You can go to the next... This next step. Just as our leaders, our leadership is starting this work from a variety of places, so are our professional staff. Professional staff. Some of these images might be familiar to you. Jen Saxa, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, outlined some of these actions in her recent professional development presentation, but all of this work lends itself to the basis district's goal. Here, you will see some of the various professionals that we have partnered with to assist with professional development, as well as some of the materials that we have begun utilizing within our curriculum. The ways we've approached this work with them include professional learning communities, curriculum development, and through an expansion of our resources and materials. Pictures on the left are from our opening day kickoff. Dr. Tara Doty provided a keynote address on implicit bias, and staff were then offered choice sessions, including Girls in STEM, Safe and Culturally Inclusive Spaces, Trauma-Informed Care, and Equity and Literacy, clearly establishing our focus as well as our commitment to equity from the first day of the school year. In regards to professional development, we need to be okay that everyone's going to start from different places and become... We became more flexible along the way and responsive to our staff feedback, and we offered more choice as we went along this school year. A challenge that we did face is that people want answers. Sometimes, there's not a script. There's no perfect response or a solution. However, we did change one session to include more specific recommendations after reading our feedback from surveys and finding out that people were frustrated to leave without concrete action steps and strategies that we could... That they could begin using right away. So we circled back and we asked the presenter to provide those. So we are being responsive and learning along this path. On the right, you can see a sampling of some of the new titles, Expanding Representation in Our Literature Resources. We also utilize a curriculum resource rubric now, where all curriculum review committees use a similar rubric to review any current or potential new material. A few examples of look-for's are: Women and minorities are featured in important roles; Pronouns and descriptors are used equally; Children of both sexes and various cultures and physical conditions will use the materials without feeling excluded or estranged or diminished. This is now part of our ongoing curriculum review process. We've also created a commemorative months resource guide for all of our teachers to utilize and select activities and resources from. So moving on, they say that it takes a village, and we believe that as well. So we also look outside of our organization for professional partnerships. So on the next slide, I share a progression of our professional partners as well as our learning topics over the past few years, but I'm going to speak specifically to what we focused on this year, and that is our partnership with Sage Wellness. This year, Dr. Tara Doty and Sage Wellness led the district-wide administrator group through two very intensive workshops. These workshops supported administrators in analyzing national data trends, focusing on identifying concrete ways to support our staff, students, and our families in lessening the achievement and the opportunity gaps. She provided culturally relevant resources and provided information about unpacking the hidden curriculum. Another outcome of our partnership with Dr. Tara Doty was implicit bias training for all of our professional and our support staffs across the entire district. These interactive sessions provided staff with learning opportunities to help support creating safe and culturally inclusive space for students. We broke these trainings down by school level to provide direct connections for elementary, middle, and high school staff and students. We broke these train... I'm sorry, repeat that. Staff explored implicit and explicit biases and saw how implicit bias can negatively impact schools and learning environments. Participants were provided practical strategies and tools to use that linked back to our work with the Culturally Responsive Teaching Strategies and the Brain Rules literature by Zaretta Hammond. Similar trainings were provided for all of our support staff. Again, we did not stray from our belief that every single one of our employees needs to be a part of this training and a part of this process. So it was very important for us to provide those training opportunities for all School District of Haverford employees. Dr. Doty also provided individual coaching and processing sessions with each of our building principals. She sat one-on-one with them to address building-specific needs, to preview and also to elicit feedback from the professional developments that were provided, as well as addressing unique building needs and providing appropriate resources. The plan also included two parent and guardian workshops. I'll speak more on that on the next slide. Moving to the right side of the slide, as you know, we have an amazing community, and I cannot stress that enough. We are fortunate to have a community that is supportive of this work, and we value our partnerships extensively. I do need to take a moment to really highlight the incredible level of support from the Haverford Education Foundation in funding this work with Dr. Doty and with Sage Wellness over the past year. Without the Ed Foundation Empowerment Grant, the depth of the work would not have been possible. So again, thank you to our entire community for all of your fundraising efforts so that these types of grants are a possibility. As I said, I would talk a little bit more about the parent forum. So if we could move on to the next slide, I have a little question for you. Two years ago, we did hold parent guardian forums, which provided the opportunity for community learning, but also we were looking to seek input for action planning purposes to incorporate into the development of the 2019-2020 schoolwork. In our survey, what do you think was the most frequent request from the parents and guardians in our community? I'll give you a second to think about it. This is an ungraded assignment. So if we can move on, it was C. Parents and guardians astoundingly wanted assistance in ways to discuss race at home, especially with younger students and younger children. As you may remember, COVID derailed this workshop that was planned, but we will reschedule this workshop to fulfill the request of our community and our families. It's such an important topic, and we will communicate dates and plans as they become finalized, but I wanted to reassure the community that that will still occur. So moving on, again, as I spoke to earlier, we have basis goals, and they are occurring in all of the district buildings. So what are some action steps that have resulted in those goals? And albeit this is not an exhaustive list, this is a glimpse into what has occurred this past year as a result of our basis goals and action planning. So Haverford has developed, and this past year has benefited from a Haverford-only educators-of-color affinity group. There's culture nights that are happening across the district in a variety of the school buildings. Our school teachers and administrators, a large number of them, have elected to participate in book clubs. Some of the books and the titles that they are reading, How to Be an Anti-Racist, White Fragility, Culturally Responsive Teaching, and then Courageous Conversations About Race. Beth and Leon will speak about other resources that are also being engaged with. Our schools have kindness weeks and mix-it-up days. Every single one of our buildings has some sort of a student interaction or student advisory meeting opportunity where students are having direct conversations with our administrators. We've... Some of the buildings have utilized culturally responsive interventions, student leadership conferences, minority student leadership conferences at both the middle school and the high school as part of our DVCEE consortium membership. Club active participation, as well as expansion in clubs and activities, continues to be a priority. We want to make sure that we are reaching out and engaging our students to build those relationships, to use as leverage, and really help students lean into the learning process and engage in the Haverford community. An inventory on representation at the elementary libraries has been conducted as part of a PLC, communication awareness for religious holidays and celebrations, our monthly DVCEE workshops that we attend, as well as diversity job fairs. We've been participating in the DVCEE job fair, but this year, we actually expanded that and utilized the New England Minority Network System, which held a job fair, and three of our administrators traveled down to Washington, DC on a weekend. Dr. Whitehead, Mr. Donegey, and Mr. Haran went down on a weekend and engaged interviews and opened even broader doors for looking for candidates to come into the district. So let's take a little bit of a deeper look. Let's drill down and take a closer look at an example of an action step at the high school. A team of high school teachers accompanied me to a DVCEE session this past year with Dr. Bill Preble from the Center for School Climate and Learning. The session reviewed the importance of authentic student voice in climbing the student voice spectrum by utilizing youth action research. With the support of Mr. Donegey, Greg DeCina, Dr. Jeremy Tomaszewski, Lisa Yacavelli, Keith McConnell, and Mike Perez engaged our students with their very own youth action research project. They couldn't attend this evening, but they put together a video presentation. So let's take a look and see what they were able to engage with.
...here in creating what we call the Student Advisory Council. I'm Keith McConnell. I am the librarian at the high school.
My name is Greg DeCina. I'm a secondary social studies teacher at Haverford High School.
And I'm Mike Perez. I teach business, mostly marketing courses at the high school.
And let me start presenting here, and Greg, you can take it away.
Thanks, Keith. So earlier this year, we attended a basis training at University of Pennsylvania with Dr. Bill Preble. And essentially, the concept of this training was highlighted by a student quote, "No change about us, without us." This training addressed the concept that over 100 years of educational reform, the only reforms that met their goals were ones that increased communication and tackled the balance of power in a school building. Essentially, school reforms that attempt to change within the existing systems don't work. Instead, we need to rethink the systems. Communication, in essence, needs to flow bottom up from students and teachers before decisions are made top-down. One key thing that was highlighted was the idea of dignity of roles. Now, our district does a really good job with surveys and transparency and communication, but we might need to tap into the expertise of our students. For example, students on the autism spectrum, students who are Level 3 versus honors, and students who are frequently exposed to school disciplinary measures navigate very different systemic issues and are in many ways experts on these issues. We need to tap into these students' expertise before we make top-down decisions that directly impact them.
Thanks, Greg. And with that in mind, we were challenged at the start of this school year to create a forum for students to have that voice in our schools. And so we sought to create what we call the Student Advisory Committee, and the goal was for those students to speak for the student body, express ideas, concerns about student climate and school climate. And so we set about creating that group. Our initial approach was to reach out to teachers, to pull them, to get their input, and we devised a committee based on some of their recommendations. And we proceeded with a brainstorm in December with those students, both virtual and in person, that asked them about a number of topics, to define a number of topics, and then ultimately decide which of those really resonated the most. And as you can see here, ultimately, that was to improve student wellness. And Mike's going to talk about that in a second. I do want to call out, one of the interesting things is that we did attend that Coalition for Educational Equity after the formation of the Student Advisory Council. And one of the big takeaways for me was the approach that Dr. Preble used to create that committee. Whereas we reached out to teachers to get their input, he actually looked at the cafeteria and engaged cafeteria aides to really help identify, almost as a sociogram, where students self-group themselves. And in that way, really identified a broader swath of the student body. And we performed some action research as part of that coalition. And I did know that we had a better representation during that action research phase, and I think we'd carry that approach forward in future. Mike, do you want to take it away and share a little bit about how we approach student wellness?
Sure. Thanks, Keith. So one of our main things as we went along with this Student Advisory Committee was having a kid voice her opinion about what they would like to see as far as changes are concerned. And some of the top things they talked about, the overwhelming numbers we saw on the last slide, was just overall student wellness, including stress management, homework load, stuff like that, that was really, you know, bringing them down. So we looked to create this subcommittee, and we called it the Student Wellness Task Group. Initially, we were looking for about six to eight teachers, and we presented this idea, actually, the students presented this idea at one of our faculty advisory committee meetings, and we ended up with about 15 or so teachers, counselors, and administrators that wanted to jump in on this task group. The initial focus was to focus on a weekly extended homeroom. You know, we were tossing around different ideas. Ultimately, we decided on trying to pilot a plan that had about an hour homeroom once a week, you know, where students could, if they needed to, they could use it as office hour. They could use it as club meetings. We could use it as, you know, study groups, or to relieve that stress management and increase student wellness, we could also use that focusing on different aspects of just life and fun things that they liked. Some of the ideas we had were, you know, a walking club, where they would walk on a track, or a puzzles club, or, you know, all sorts of different things that the kids could do. Unfortunately, right in the middle of those planning stages when COVID-19 hit and we kind of got off track and weren't able to fulfill it, but where we are right now, we were hoping to pilot the plan with a weekly extended homeroom, and then we're looking to kick it off this upcoming school year on a regular basis. So we're really looking forward to getting back in the classroom so we can actually put this into place and see what great things we can, you know, come out of it.
Thanks for your time today, and we look forward to continuing this initiative when we return to the school. Thanks so much.
So hopefully, that was able to show you a glimpse into how we are able to move along the student voice spectrum in really putting students in a place of leadership, co-planning, executive functioning, and shared responsibilities for those outcomes. So that showed you the work that has occurred over the past year. If we move on to the next slide, let's talk about next steps. I'm pleased to be joined this evening by our co-chairs for the Strategic Action Planning Committee of our Diversity and Inclusion Goal, Beth Mastercola and Leon Smith. So I will turn it over to Ms. Mastercola, who will overview that process.
Sure. Hello. My name is Beth Mastercola, and I'm the principal at Cooperstown Elementary School.
Hello. My name is Leon Smith, and I'm a social studies teacher at Haverford High School.
We would first like to take a moment to describe how the Diversity and Inclusion Goal was developed. Next slide, please. Starting two years ago, the district hosted forums, and then more recently, last fall, surveys were collected with invaluable information that our students, teachers, and families shared with us. At that point, a district-wide committee was formed to review this data and read articles about strategic planning best practices. Subgroups were then created to write strategic goals about topics that were presented most frequently in our data. Leon and I were placed on the Diversity and Inclusion Goal Writing Team together with other teachers and parents. Next slide, please. Together, we created the following goal: Establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops socio-cultural proficiency. Once the goal was written, Leon and I were honored to be selected as the committee chairs. Sarah, Leon, and I then selected a diverse and multi-talented group to be the committee members, and were charged with generating a short-term action plan. Sadly, this was interrupted by the school closure, but we'll resume first thing in the fall. Despite being closed, there was still a lot of work going on this summer. Leon?
Yes. Beth and I have been immersed in learning as much as we can about this important work. The murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and countless others have started necessary conversations and led to an increase of information surrounding anti-racist work. Through books, articles, podcasts, conferences, and webinars, we have been dedicated to gathering information and being a part of the conversation about how to infuse anti-racism into our work. Books such as Stamped From the Beginning and How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram X. Kendi have really provided a historical perspective and lens from which to move forward. Educating ourselves about the origins of racist ideas as well as systemic and institutional racism will help us to view this work from an anti-racist perspective and make informed decisions. Culturally Responsive Teaching by Zaretta Hammond and Cultural Proficiency by Lindsay Norrie Robbins, Terrell Lindsay, provide guidance from a curricular and pedagogical perspective. We also attended a webinar on culturally responsive teaching where educator and author Zaretta Hammond provided strategies for the physical and virtual classroom. We are committed to doing this work in any format, physical or virtual. The webinar on Building Culturally Relevant Schools with one of the leading academics in her field, Dr. Gloria Ladsen Billings, was very informative as we consider the current moment and the opportunity to make schools more equitable for all students. Our attendance at the Moving from Aspiration to Action, a virtual forum on teacher diversity and student success webinar, provided insight and guidance about recruiting, hiring, and retaining educators of color, an important part of this work. Next slide, please. When our committee meets again in the fall, we would like to bring the insights and knowledge gained from our summer work to the group. Curriculum, diversity of staff, professional development, and analyzing data are all areas that we would like to add to the district's ongoing work. Examining curriculum through an anti-racist perspective and increasing the number of teachers of color are ideas that have come up many times in our reading this summer and the webinars we have attended. Additionally, professional development will allow time for courageous and sometimes uncomfortable conversations about race that are necessary in this work. Lastly, critically examining data will help to identify some of the systemic effects of racism and offer solutions. We are excited and extremely motivated to continue this process in September.
Excellent. Thank you Beth and Leon for outlining the work that you have begun and are looking forward to continue with as we continue in the fall. So let's talk a little bit again about next steps since they brought us into the fall. Beth and Leon spoke about the Strategic Action Planning Process and that this work will absolutely resume in the fall. I'm also proposing the following scope of work with the Sage Wellness Organization. The continued partnership with Sage Wellness and the School District of Havreford Township will resort in concrete outcomes relating to incorporating comprehensive and culturally relevant equity-based and anti-racist techniques into the district's daily practices. By providing comprehensive oversight, the facilitation of leadership team meetings, and creating a parent equity committee, the School District of Havreford Township staff and families will learn how to implement relevant and equitable practices needed to assist students and families using a culturally inclusive and equity-based lens. By increasing knowledge, skill set, and ability to enact policy, School District of Havreford Township will be better equipped to utilize an equitable and anti-racist approach within daily interactions with students, families, and colleagues. So what are some of the benefits of an equity leadership team model? The ability to get volunteer educators to share their strength and expertise from all areas of the organization, targeted tasks and assignments each month, peer-led, providing peer support and accountability opportunities for all staff, able to give staff ownership and empowerment of the path of the school, and shared accountability for its success in this equity work. Staff can identify student, staff, or specific family needs and work on a single issue or on multiple issues. For example, creating an environment of empowerment, an opportunity for voice and choice, and flexibility to meet our unique school needs. It also allows for the systematic plan of the district to be integrated into daily practices of each of the schools through a review of roles and responsibilities and potential policy changes and/or recommendations. We're also proposing the development of and facilitation of a School District of Havreford Township Parent and Guardian Equity Committee. This equity committee will be comprised of parent volunteers who share a commitment to creating an equitable and inclusive educational environment for all students and families. This parent guardian equity committee will provide space for feedback as well as ideas on ways to build upon our current district strengths while also providing feedback and input for areas of improvement. Participants will engage in interactive meetings where they will learn and practice specific techniques related to healthy communication, positive activism, addressing bias, and recognizing the cultural and historical needs of the School District of Havreford Township community. We will utilize the PSBA Equity Toolkit. We'll also utilize the recent PSBA Equity Plan format that has been recently provided as a reference and a support. All of these tools and these action steps would be a collaborative effort to formalize a district equity action plan. I would also ask the school board to consider these as potential action steps in the recent anti-racist resolution that you reviewed last week. So moving on to the next slide. In closing, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge and thank our building principals. Their dedication and commitment to this work has been evident from the very beginning. Additionally, I need to acknowledge our administrative colleagues, our teachers, our student leaders, our community members, our supportive school board, and last but certainly not least, the encouragement and explicit commitment from our superintendent. It's only working together and in a partnership that we have made all of this work possible. We look forward to continuing the dialogue and being equity champions to ensure that all of our students truly feel a sense of belonging here at Havreford. So again, thank you for allowing us to come and present the work that we've undertaken in the past year and hope to continue as we move into the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you Beth and Leon. Questions from the board? Ari, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Sorry about any background noise. I'm in the comfort of my own home, as is everybody else. Sarah, Leon, Beth, this all sounds great. And as an education system, we are uniquely poised to address this societal issue head-on and have a really good impact to make significant change going forward. How are we going to measure how the basis group and all these great ideas are doing? What's our dashboard? What's our report card look like?
That's a great question, Ari. I think that that's where collaboratively, between assessing the needs and the input from our community, our stakeholders through the parent equity group, as well as creating measurable action steps within the equity plan and timelines, chunking that into timelines and building in systems of accountability, we'll be able to show measurement towards that. And it's impossible to say what that is right now, or we would be pre-determining what we want, the path we want it to go down.
Can I give you some ideas?
Well, yeah, well, absolutely. It's a collaborative effort, and hopefully you can participate in the, in any of these equity committees, so.
The way our disciplinary policies are applied, our gifted identification, AP course, and then of course, our belonging and engagement, our people of color in our district participating in clubs and sports, extracurricular activities, so on and so forth. Those are some of the things I think we would do well to include in a report card to measure how we're doing. Are we being effective? Are we meeting our goals?
I'm jotting those down. Thank you for the suggestions.
I have one more.
I'm sure Beth and Leon are as well.
I have one more point I'd like to make. There is information available on the internet through a website called ProPublica about the various things that I just mentioned. The data is from 2015 and 2016. It's what we report to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And I'd love to have more current data available to the board and the community.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. When can we get that information?
I would love to be able to come back and, you know, as a team, we can provide some of those same up-to-date data points. So we will, we will work on looking at the agendas and see how soon we can get back here and get that information shared.
Thank you again.
Next up, Laura.
Hi. Thanks to all of you for this. Just a few questions. I'm relatively new to the board, so can you talk a little bit about how did we find Sage Wellness and Dr. Doty?
Absolutely. So Dr. Doty, and I don't know if Dr. Ruchi wants to jump in here, but we go to collaborative efforts like the DVCE, and our local districts have a networking system where we share vetted resources. You know, because some of them, you never know. You have to, you have to really work together to vet out presenters and also partnerships. And she came very hot, highly recommended from some neighboring districts, specifically Lower Marion has utilized her for a number of years and spoke very highly of her. And I know Dr. Ruchi was able to go over and observe some of the activities and those one-on-one coaching sessions with administrators and her approach and her willingness to lean in to those difficult conversations and put in measures of accountability so that they're really being able to track progress, intrigued Dr. Ruchi and wanted to find ways to bring that back to our district. But she works with a number of districts in the area in this, in this work.
Thank you. The happenings at Havreford that you posted from the previous school year, that was really impressive. Given that we're going to be moving into some sort of something, do you have a sense of how, how much of this can translate to, to an online format or some sort of a hybrid format so that we can continue making these kinds of connections and engaging our students and these different, and our staff as well in these kinds of activities?
So I can speak to that a little bit. I can say that, you know, I would love to be able to tell the future and see how that's all going to play out. And I don't know how that's going to play out. I can tell you that Dr. Doty and I, in the development of our continual growth and next steps and working together on what makes sense for our system and proposing, you know, the recommendations for next year's action plan, talked about that. We talked about, you know, and I know Leon and Beth and I have had conversations as well. How do we not lose the momentum of the moment and really continue with the discussion, the dialogue, the resources that are out there and move forward in the fall? Even if, and I don't, I'm not saying this, I'm not making a commitment one way or another, but if we find ourselves in a virtual environment, how can we build in ways that that work still continues? And, and she has plans. I mean, a lot of the discussions, even if it's equity team planning, can happen virtually, checking into classrooms, checking into the meetings and across the buildings and, and meeting with our families via Zoom. We are making sure that there's capability to continue the work, even if we are in a virtual environment.
Great. Thanks. And just the last thing as a comment. The, the workshop that was canceled, thank you for rescheduling that. I was looking forward to attending it. And, you know, so I'm glad to hear that that's on the calendar again for the fall. So thank you for that.
No problem. Thank you.
If I could interrupt, if I can interrupt just for a second for the benefit of the public, would you be able to just take a minute and tell us what DVCE is and how we engage with them?
So sure, I'll do my best. So Delaware Valley Consortium of Equity and Excellence is a consortium. And it's housed, it's housed through the University of Pennsylvania, but there are multiple branches. So there really is a three to four state ratio where University of Pennsylvania is absolutely able to facilitate vet presenters, go look and bring in really resounding presenters that are just experts in their field. And as part of that consortium and members of that consortium, we're able to bring a team of five to six people to the University of Pennsylvania and participate in these really strong presenters and workshops. So we do go down to University of Pennsylvania with a team. Every single opportunity we can, we take advantage of. They also put on the student, the minority student leadership conferences. They house a, you know, they host a diversity job fair. They do a lot of resources and professional development for the districts that work together. But most astounding is they also provide opportunity to network. So we really can talk to Lower Marion, talk to other members of the consortium to talk, to discuss presenters, opportunities, share resources, and plan a little bit together. And we have done that. So it's, it's been a beneficial experience that we have participated in the last two years.
Thank you. Next up, Kristin.
Thanks for all of your hard work on this. I just remember when the initial, some of the initial budgets came out once we had gone into lockdown and we knew things were going to get pretty bad financially with COVID. And I learned that basis was potentially going to be cut. The first thing I did was reach out to Dr. Ruchi and Larry and Bridgette and just express my dismay because this work absolutely needs to continue. So I'm, I'm so glad that it will continue into next school year. And thank you for all the work that you've done so far this past school year. I have a few questions. Let's see where I should start. I guess I'm thinking now as we're moving into this more technologically mediated educational space, how, how do you see this work shifting into a virtual setting? Are any of the partners, any of the organizations that we're partnered with, are they offering trainings on supporting students virtually? I just, I know so much that means socio-cultural, right? This is about bringing people together, and now we've just been spread further apart.
That's a great, it's a great question. In fact, the DVCE held virtual meetings with the leadership groups, not, you know, not the entire teams, but leadership groups over the summer that I participated in, in just that. How do we continue to work virtually and provide additional support to our students, especially that are going to affect traumas on levels that we might not even anticipate? You know, what, what's happening? So there has been a lot of conversation and resources and sharing to that end. As well as this summer, they continued with their DVCE Leadership Institute virtually. And so we did have a team of educators go there, staff members to go and continue with a focus this summer on as well, social emotional connections, especially coming out of a virtual pandemic situation, online learning, and how do we really put supports in place to help our students, you know, navigate, including remediation and/or adjusting scaffolding supports that might and/or adjusting scaffolding supports that might be needed. And they might look different depending on different people's situations. So I can't go into detail, you know, there's been a lot of conversation and a lot of discussion to that end and that we've been able to participate in.
Great. And just knowing that trauma-informed practices are a part of this work, is there any thinking around how we might support our students when we go back to school? Either whether they've dealt with a family member being ill with COVID, possibly experiencing the death of a loved one, loss of contact with extended family, or even just the fear of socialization and being around others?
Sure. And I can say that Nicole Badistelli, our Director of People's Services, who works directly with our school psychologists and Jen Saxa, who works with the Guidance Councilors, those have been ongoing conversations. And again, we can't tell the future, but planning, pulling resources, and awareness that there potentially could be an increased need and making sure that we're preparing for that. Those conversations are absolutely occurring and supports are being looked at. Again, it's one of the unknowns. We don't know what that will look like, to what extent. But you're right, we need to be prepared and ready to meet those needs of our families.
And then I'm wondering too, and I say this as a white person who's learning to become an anti-racist, knowing that that's a lifelong journey. I know our group is largely led by white people, and I'm just wondering how, as a team, you all are negotiating that?
I think it's a very fair question, and I appreciate the fact that in one of the correspondence in the comments, the conversation was, this is a conversation that really impacts white society to move the needle and continue the dialogue. And we understand that. I will say that, and I'm going to give Leon some spotlight here. Being able to provide a platform for our Haverford educators of color to discuss and have authentic conversations about, you know, what it's like and experiences in a suburban school district has definitely infused a level of engagement and desire and having open dialogue with administration. I think that a lot of our educators of color are engaging in this work and helping bring perspective into the discussion and dialogue. Obviously, we want to continue more. But I think it's a good point. It's a different perspective is important, you know. And I can say that I have a daughter who's African-American, and I see things very differently than I did before I had a daughter that was African-American. So perspective and being open to hearing different experiences through a different lens is important. So that community parent team is also going to be important, to hear open dialogue and open feedback and listen to experiences and be open to not having the answer, but engage in the conversation is the first step. And we're there. We want to continue to nurture those relationships.
Thanks. And I'm just wondering too, you mentioned that all staff are receiving this training, which is excellent. But I also know that people may be resistant to the training, and I just, I wonder what kind of supports are in place to kind of bring them along? I mean...
Good question. It's continuing the conversation, right? We are scheduling trainings that are mandatory for all of our staff groups, and we are engaging in the discussion. But just like I acknowledged in this presentation this evening, not everyone is at the same place. Not everyone has the same background information, and not everyone has had the same experiences. And we have to be okay with that. And we have to provide space and opportunity for people to flush that out and be okay with sharing their opinions, even if they don't match what my opinions might be. So it's a progress. It's a process, right? And I put a slide on introducing Beth and Leon that change is a process. It's not an event. So we're going to continue to work on moving the needle and having those discussions, but we're committed to it. And we'll lean into being uncomfortable in some of those discussions, and that's what we're asking our colleagues to do, and that's what we need to do as leaders as well.
And I was wondering also if you have had any contact with the Haverford Town stands with Black Lives Matter group of high school students? I feel like that could be a great grassroots partnership.
I have. In fact, I've reached out to them. We have not, just because we have gotten some communication. Every communication that has come to me from alumni, parents, or from students, I've had conversations with. But we have not received a petition yet. But obviously, we were made aware of the petition. I've seen it. I've read it. In any way that we can learn from or glean or open doors of communication, I'm all for. So I did reach out to the students. I have had conversation with them. We've had dialogues. We have an official meeting tomorrow, but we've had a lot of correspondence and shared a lot of resources. And so it's an opportunity for us to, like you just said, you know, have a form of partnership and work together. So yes, I have.
And just one final question. I think it's great that we're working with Penn and the Delaware Valley Consortium. Are any of the local HBCUs, are they offering these kinds of consulting services like Cheney University? Is there any possibility for partnership with?
I don't know about that. I'll write that down to see if they're offering any type of professional development and in collaboration. I know that I personally reached out to all of the local HBUCs for partnerships with their educational departments, right? Like, you know, build the pipeline. And so we've had some of those conversations, but not specifically to your point about potential, you know, partnerships as far as overseeing professional development or partnering in that manner. But I will absolutely write it down, and it's something that Beth and Leon can consider as we work with the strategic planning process as well.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks, Kristin.
Bridgette, you're up next.
I just wanted to give my appreciation for this long overdue presentation. Obviously, a lot of work has been going on and is envisioned, and it's very important that we keep this at the forefront. I appreciate, you know, this update, and hopefully, there's still 74 members of the public that still seem to be streaming. And I know this will be watched in the community after tonight's board meeting. And so one of my questions is, I'm expecting that like the staff and students who have the opportunity to engage and raise their hand to volunteer, that members of the community will be interested in how they might engage in some of the task force and working groups? And is there a channel to direct that kind of interest and action?
Sure. So, yeah, I mean, there's been thought and consideration into how that will be done in a systematic and fair, equitable way. Obviously, this is all pending on the approval of the proposed partnership. But one of the things that we're already in development with is how do we create some sort of a survey and/or demographic collection so that people who do want to participate, we have a way to ensure a very broad spectrum of demographic backgrounds of our community? Because that's important to us. We don't want to hear from the same people who are attending our, you know, our PTOs and our IDC and those channels that have been established. We want to make sure that it is explicitly stated. So if you're watching this and you're sending the message to people, you know, if you are thinking about it but are hesitant to like engage and put yourself in it, please, I encourage you to do so. But I foresee us putting out a survey with some questions of demographic backgrounds so that we can ensure that we really do have a diverse background on the committee to hear and gain from a variety of perspectives and experiences throughout the district and experience in the district.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you for this work. I think it demonstrates that our district is in a position of strength where we can look not just and say, oh, you know, we're doing pretty well, but to look at how each of our students is engaged with and succeeding in our district and being able to question and criticize and change and learn together and have these challenging conversations is a testament to kind of the Haverford community and the position of strength. And I think this presentation lays out a great groundwork for, as you mentioned, not just the district strategic goal of diversity of inclusion, but a more specific kind of equity policy, equity lens that will be incorporated and embedded in this very systemic way that you've outlined. And I appreciate the work that you do and know that this is just going to be a launching point.
Thank you. Thank you. It's all the administrators. It's absolutely a collaborative lift. And teachers and students. Yeah, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Well, Sarah, thank you very much, and please send our appreciation and thanks to all the folks who participated to get this thing moving and to bring this presentation to us tonight, and we look forward to good work in the future.
Thank you.